Call the meeting to order here. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands and has one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Okay, do you have everybody here listed or trustees, department heads, et cetera, et cetera? Thank you very much. Uh, let's go to the minutes. We're looking for an approval, uh, a motion in a second for the approval of the September fifth, twenty twenty-three village board meeting. The September fifth, twenty twenty-three, uh, maybe of the whole. And file the May fourth, twenty twenty-three zoning board of appeals, the June twelfth, twenty twenty-three board of public works. The June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three joint library board, August seventh, twenty twenty-three finance committee. August eighth, twenty twenty-three public safety committee, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three board of public works meetings as presented.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion of the minutes, corrections?
There, I would like to know one direction. The video of the wall was Jim Rockwell is the president instead of David Lord is the president, so I will leave that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. So with that change, we have a motion in a second. If I want a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Clark. That motion carries. Uh, a person's requesting to be heard on a non-agenda item. Uh, did you sign in, sir?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. If I just get the information, I'll call on you. Very good. Mr. Stallone on four sixty-one Tanger Court, Grafton. This is your chance to stand up and if you wouldn't mind coming to the, uh, restroom here so we can hear you.
Do you have a chair? Or probably I don't have enough time to grab a chair there. Thank you for giving me a chance to express. Um, some thoughts tonight. Thank you for your service and I really appreciate the people who step up and. Are on boards, the governing board, uh, of the school district in this village. But I appreciate it. I've been a member. Of this community for thirty-five plus years and, um, so that's why I care. Um, I read in the paper a little while ago about investigation of the chief and so I thought I. I'm glad that the investigations showed that, uh, most of the things that were accused are. Um, were not founded and, uh, so I thought I'd come because I've appreciated how the chief has enhanced. Our, the police department. Now, when I see the, the K nine effort, the. The, the video recording as you enter the village, the community building. My church raised, uh, money to give to the K nine. Uh, and, and so I, I've never seen that kind of effort in enhancing. So I'm grateful for that. And about the time I read that article, uh, I, I got this news. And I'll just, it's just, uh, four sentences here. And it's the headline, uh, was this, let's see if I can get it now. A police hiring crisis is gripping US cities and towns and, um, from the big cities to small towns across the country, America is facing a police short, officer shortage. To blame, uh, is a mass exodus from police departments over the last several years. Along with difficulty hiring new officers, many in law enforcement say departments are suffering from plaguing morale. Thanks to a wave of anti-police sentiment. In some cases. City councils are slash police budgets, leaving some police chiefs feeling abandoned as they are stretched in trying to. Keep residents safe. So, um, there's much more. Crime to handle and our things that people are scrambling to deal with officers quitting in drills as well. So I. I guess I wanted just to come and encourage you now that this investigation is over that you would, you know, the old, uh, axiom is. The old saying is, you know, when you see conflict, you can bring a bucket of water or a bucket of gasoline. And, uh, I, I'd encourage us with all the strife that's happening in our society. And our culture and our politics, I'd encourage you to bring, um, peace. And, and allow our community to move forward with the chief who's enhanced our, the department. Because that's, I think, is, is best for our community. So I wanted to tell you that. Um, if it's helpful, if it's necessary, I know a lot of people, um, that would sign and say we support the chief, at least. I could come back easily with fifteen names, hundred names probably. Um, not that I have a lot of time to go collect, but I could do it for the next board meeting. I know a couple other, uh, people that, um, told me that they'd like to be here too and then they would bring their own. Group of, of signatures, not just from a corner of or of a neighborhood, but across the, across the community. So that, so thanks for listening. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thanks.
Uh, Todd Hillner, did I get that right?
Yeah.
Let's see, thanks, Todd. Sixteen sixty-two Delwood Court in Grafton?
Yes, there she is. Thank you. Um, I do want, I'd like to speak on behalf of the police chief. I read the article in the news graphic and, uh. I was pleased that, that really nothing was found because my personal experience, police chief. Has, has just been fantastic. Um, it's, uh. Uh, Joe Stallone had said, uh, he came out to our church and, uh. We donated to the K nine campaign. He was out in the lobby shaking hands, meeting people the whole time, building a sense of community. And I remember at the time I thought, wow. This is like old school America, like let's, let's get to know each other. Let's, let's, you know, let's build relationships. And then. I was at AM coffee. Uh, with a friend of mine, so having coffee, came back in for a refill. And the police chief was there, shook my hand, said hello, officers were there, shook my hand, said hello. And I just, I remember thinking to myself, what, what an awesome sense of community is this? You know, this, you hear all sorts of things about police forces and all the strife and all these things. I'm, I'm, I'm looking at, at our police force here. With our police chief who's out there building relationships within the community. And, and it's important, right? Those relationships are important. So I just feel like he's going way out of his way. To do something that quite frankly, people aren't doing anymore. I just, I just want everyone here to know how much I appreciate that and how much I appreciate him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak at this point in time? All right. Well, thank you very much. Um, we can't comment on that. We can't take any action on it, but we appreciate you coming tonight. All right, uh, business presented by the president. Uh, just one thing that we're going to do, um, starting at October, what I'd like to recommend that we do is much like the county does. We will have some cards in the back if you wish to speak to the, um, to the, uh, to the board. On an agenda item or a non-agenda item, we'll be allowing people to speak at the beginning of the meeting, just like we did now. Like to start that, um, effective October first, so we can maintain transparency. And have people talk on whatever they feel they want to talk. Of course, during a, um, during a, a public hearing, both people can speak specifically on those items. But, um, we'll start off the meetings with agenda and non-agenda items. So just give everybody a heads up. We'll start that next week. There'll be new signup cards in back and our clerk will pick those up and bring them up to, uh, the president so we can address all items. All right, resolutions, ordinance, action items. Uh, we have a resolution here commending Pam King on her service. Now, because I don't want to forget to do a, um, to do a motion. And the second, what I'm going to do here, I'd like to have an offer, a motion in second, and then we can get to the formalities here.
I will offer a motion.
We will offer a motion in second. Uh, this is a resolution which will require the village board to vote on this. All in favor of recognizing Pam. And, uh, many for, for retirement and for her years of service, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And there are no delays. So that's unanimous, Pam. That's good. Thanks. So Pam, I'm going to present this to you. We're going to stand up and well. Present this.
Yeah, so good to have you there. Really appreciate it. So I'm going to read the whole darn thing. And I'll say, you know, some people say, just keep that light. No, we're going to, we're going to complete this very secure. So, Bill in Grafton, Resolution oh twenty-eight. Twenty-eight, series twenty twenty-three, resolution commanding, commending Pam King on retirement. And for her years of service to the village of Grafton, whereas Pam King, trying to put the Grafton area chamber of Congress in October twenty-three, after graciously. Having graciously served the people of the village of Grafton and the greater Grafton community in the past. Whereas Pam has served as an executive director of the Grafton area chamber of Congress since two thousand eleven. And whereas Director King played a pivotal role in establishing new business and supporting existing businesses in Grafton to increase our tax base. Growth of local jobs and provide the best retail environment in Grafton and Bozart County. And whereas Director King successfully planned and executed countless community events, including our annual Christmas break. During Grafton, the fall in Grafton, holidays, ladies' night out and many, many more. And whereas Director King was an active leader in the Osaki calling tourism council, which has enhanced quality of play for residents and visitors. And whereas during her tenure, Director King has thoughtfully cultivated long-term relationships in the community. The Graftons, what was the village of Grafton and the town of Grafton. And whereas Director King always represented the chamber of Congress, the village of Grafton. And other various stakeholders for the highest degree of professionalism and pride in it. Whereas it is appropriate to recognize the accomplishments and years of service that Pam has given Grafton. Now, therefore. It resulted that the village board of the village of Grafton does hereby acknowledge its sincere appreciation and gratitude. The over twelve years of dedicated service that Pam King has provided to the community.
And started to run on that record.
And it further resolved that the village board has established that those Graftons hereby wish Pam the very best in her retirement. And all of the mature endeavors resolved this eighteen day, uh, September twenty twenty. Pam's gratification. Mr. President, may I pile on the festivities? Um, Pam, we have a little bit of a, um, tradition. We started here in Grafton. With, um, outgoing debuting areas that have meant so much to the community. So on behalf of the village board, village staff, we'd like to present to you Wisconsin Avenue with Chamber of Officers are located. On the back, I've caught as many of our public works folks that have helped out through the years, staff and elected officials and noted. So.
Yeah, put it on the streets.
I, um, I certainly appreciate all of you, all that you do, all the differences that all of you made here matter more than you will ever know. Um, I'm a little nervous about going to a, a new city where I don't think people would care as much as you do. And so for that, I will be eternally grateful for you as my friends, for you as my colleagues. For you as my mentors, for you as people that I hope to be like when I grow up. Um, thank you all. I will miss you terribly and, um, we will be back to visit. Um, until summer, no, but we will be back. So thank you all. This is me more than I could ever say. Thank you.
Well, I'm not going to forget that vote. So if I already did that, so very happy to have presented that to Pam. All right, um, we need to look to the resolution, um, uh, desigating public depositories. Jesse, do you want to pick this one?
Absolutely. This is, uh, simply a housekeeping matter whereby Cornerstone Bank, um, the village's bank is changing names to Coricon State Bank. Um, we need to legally designate Coricon State Bank as our depository. Basically as our village bank via resolution that is a requirement for us as a municipality. Therefore, because of the name change, this housekeeping resolution is before the village board this evening.
All right, this is, uh, a resolution. So we'll need an offer of motion in a second.
I'll offer.
I'll motion. I'll second.
So an offer of motion in a second. Any questions here? Seems to be pretty straightforward.
I do have one quick question. Go ahead, Amy.
I'll, I'll tell you what, Amy, why don't you go ahead?
So I'm just confused on my cornerstone. It was still listed on there because as of.
You can, we're using the wrong number for the next year for the Fed requires us to change over. So just because we have a lot of. Automatic payments, we make the state and the funds receive the state, it's going to work for that.
They know that they actually changed over the weekend.
Yeah, today was their first official day. Clark, did you hear that?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
My question is. I'm sorry. My question is similar, uh, in a similar vein. I noticed that all of the banks that are listed there do have addresses there except for Coricon Bank. I'm not sure if that matters at all, but just wanted to make sure that if it did, that we were able to address it.
Yep. No, the final one will have the address. I had provided the resolution and was going to update it on Friday and I was out at the office unexpectedly. So apologize for that. So the final one will have their address. It's, uh. Three twenty-six East Lake Street, Coricon, Wisconsin.
Great. I know that that one's already on my desk for signature, but we're going to wait till it's approved and we'll get the updated, updated one to sign. So we can get her taken care of. So. Okay, we have a motion, um, and acceptance, uh, and, uh, we also have some discussion, any further discussion?
All right, uh, we'll take a vote on that. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Uh, we'll go to the, uh, report that the finance committee, approval of the claim for Julia Doyle, Chicago, Illinois, not to exceed, exceed two thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars. Jesse?
Certainly, uh, the incident at hand was, uh, amounted to a scraped bumper. Um, the, um. Employee was traveling to training, um, in, uh, unfortunately scraped the bumper of this individual's vehicle. Uh, the individual, uh, police report was filed, uh, this individual filed a claim with us per our newly adopted policy. Um, administratively, we can handle liability claims up to two thousand five hundred dollars. This came in at two thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars. Therefore, it came through finance and is now before village board. Um, we do not anticipate any claims nor was there any damage to the village vehicle. Um, this is, uh, as pictures within the staff report show. Um, and that said, uh, a recommendation of approval of the claim for two thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars is before the board.
All right, I think, uh, we had a question whether our vehicle was damaged, uh, on the last time and it appears our vehicle was not damaged. So it should be pretty much. On a, uh, a vote, all done. So what I'll do is we will look to. Um, a motion, I look for a motion in a second for the approval of the claim from Julia Doyle in Chicago, Illinois, not to exceed two thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on this?
I have a question. Are you going to have her sign off on anything so she doesn't come back later on and say, wait, there's more down?
Yes, we'll, we'll be working with our insurance company to make sure we get that waiver. Yep, yep.
Any further questions? All right, motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is the ayes have it. Good. Let's move on to report of Board of Public Works. Um, it looks like we are looking to approve an elimination of, uh, television and computer monitoring recycling fees for residents effective immediately. I understand there's been a little bit of a change with, uh, the market.
Yep, I, I could bat lead off. Amber, please feel free to fill in any blanks if I miss anything here. Um, our longtime, uh, recycling company that we contract with for, um, these. Uh, items, um, is able to do it for free. So there's no longer a cost to pass along to residents. With that, we want to eliminate the fee. Uh, we don't look at this, we look at this as purely a service, not a revenue driver. And again, because our contractor is willing to do this for free or is able to do this for free because of market conditions, I understand the, um. State is going to the manufacturers, not the recyclers to, um, recoup costs. So therefore. Again, our contractor is able to provide this service for free and we want to translate that over to our residents as well. So therefore, the recommendation is to. Approve an immediate elimination of television and computer monitor recycling fees.
All right, um, we'll need a motion in a second for this. To approve eliminating television and computer monitors, recycling fees for residents effective immediately.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Your motion in a second. Any questions?
Question. Will we be communicating this to the community like on Facebook or something?
Oh, we're going to advertise it far and wide. Yep, absolutely.
Yeah. Uh, same situation drops up off of, of the DPW.
Yeah, I don't believe any other logistics, uh, with this have changed at all. Amber, is that correct?
Correct. It'll function just like it does today. You just won't have to pay.
Okay, Amber, quick question here. Um, I, I know that there's sometimes with the big, um, LCD, LED plasma TVs, the even ones that have tubes. Are, are they all included? Cause I know for a while there, people were paying so much for a home.
Yes. Oh, for the, for the TV?
Yes.
Yes, anything related to any type of TV is included.
Oh, that's considerable cost saving. So.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we have a motion in a second here. Um, we'll go to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Let's go to the report of the public safety committee. We're looking to approve the acceptance of the donation of a hundred dollars to the Grafton Police Department from Modern Woodman. Water, Modern Woodman of America, as well as three gift cards totaling one hundred dollars from St. Paul's Lutheran Church and School. Jesse?
Uh, per policy, um, donations must be formally received, uh, or excuse me, formally accepted by the village board. This is coming through committee. Um, and these do not fall with any, any, uh, within any of the blanket acceptance, like for the K nine foundation. Um, this does not fall in that category. Therefore, it is before the board this evening.
Very good. Uh, motion in a second to approve acceptance of the donation of a hundred dollars from Grafton Police Department or to the Grafton Police Department. From Modern Woodman of America, as well as three gift cards totaling one hundred dollars for St. Paul's Lutheran Church and School.
I'll motion to approve.
Second, a motion in second. Any discussion on this?
Chief, can you just explain to the board what the three gift cards will be used for? How are you going to utilize them?
Yeah. So the three gift cards are going to be used for, uh, performance, uh, for. Officers that go above and beyond and we're going to get those out as part of the chief's coin process, uh, to be able to show, uh, recognition and reward for them. So in case Clark didn't hear that, the hundred dollars is going to be, uh, these gift cards are going to be used, um, as a recognition of, uh, performance above and beyond. Very good. Thank you. Any other discussion here? Okay, we'll need a motion, uh, that motion. We've already had the motion in second. Um, we'll look for a vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Uh, second, uh, we'll be looking for a motion to approve the donation from all my friends for the sensory room creation. Be approved. Uh, Jesse, I think there's a little bit on this one too.
Yes, this is actually something really amazing for, and, and amazing opportunity for the village and, and I'm very appreciative of all my friends coming forward with this opportunity for our police department. Um, what it is, is a, um, grant to offset the cost of establishing a sensory room. A sensory room would be furnished. Decorated, um, and, um, prepared in a way to accommodate, um, autistic adults and children. Um, should they stop in the police department for a care check, um, need to be interviewed, spoken to, just simply a safe space. Um, and there are some very specific needs, um, before those folks that, that need to be met. And so all my friends came forward. Um, worked very closely with the police department to establish, um, you know, what, what would be a good, um, way to, um, create this, um, sensory room. Um, for the target audience, if you will, and, um, are providing, um, funds to make that happen. Um, it is one of the first, if not the first in the county. Um, so it is, um, really, um, out on the forefront of community service and just again, an amazing amenity. For our police department to be able to offer. And again, I'd like to thank, um, all my friends for coming forward and providing this opportunity to us as a community.
Very good. All right, I'll look for a motion and a second to approve the donation from all my friends for the sensory room creation be approved.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, do we know what the amount of their donation will be, chief? And I do know that this sensory room is new in the budget for twenty twenty-four. Is that right?
I don't recall sensory room in the budget for twenty twenty-four. Chief, we're having a hard time here in U L. We're sorry.
I'm sorry. I don't recall the sensory room being in the.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, uh, the, uh, sensory room budget that they gave us is seventy-five hundred dollars. That's what their donation is.
Oh, it is.
They have requested another five thousand from the Grafton Cedarburg Rotary Club. Um, but I don't know where the status is on that. Um, that's up to the, uh, Rotary Board to determine if they get that grant. If they get it, then we'll add another five thousand. But right now it's only seventy-five hundred, uh, for the room.
Okay, and did, um, have we got any information? And did you know from, of any, um, estimates on that room? We didn't receive any estimates from them. We're just.
No, this is a, this is, they, they said, here is your budget. Give us a list of the items. We can purchase it for you. And they're going to do the installation, um, and all the other stuff that goes along with it. So we don't have any part of it. It's just solely donating from. Their charitable foundation and the police department. There is a particular area.
Okay. I, I guess I would feel better personally to just have that information in the motion. I, I don't feel that I have enough information to make a decision on that. Normally we have specifics written in the motion.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we answer the questions and we'll come back and we'll rephrase the motion if you're okay with that?
Sure. Um, can I ask a question though about, so you're saying that, um, they will supply everything? Money, all the supplies for the room and they will pay for everything?
Yeah, that's correct. So we, what they told us to do is provide them with a list of items that go into the sensory room. Uh, including the paint, flooring, any decorations or any lighting, anything like that. Give them the list and they make the purchase, they do the installation and so we, we're not doing any of that. It's all on them.
And then how will you know what to put in the room?
Well, everything is going to be that we've detailed out will be on that list that we give to them to purchase.
Is there somebody that you're going to refer to so you know what to purchase for the room? That's, that's my question.
Diane, the director of all my, all my friends and her and I are working closely together on this project. And, um, she's, she's the one that's running all the stuff.
Okay, okay. Hopefully we can get a list of all that information going forward. I, I would like to see that at some point.
Uh, Clark?
My question was already answered with the cost about it. Thank you, chief.
Okay, so do we want to, uh, change, uh, I'm sorry, Amy, I forgot.
And I can't remember if we discussed this at public safety, but who's going to maintain that room? Like if one of the items breaks or needs to be replaced. Is all my friends going to pay for that replacement? Has that been discussed with them?
Still, we have not discussed that with them. Um, I, I would anticipate that if something were a break in that room. Um, it would be on us to replace. Um, however, a lot of the stuff that's going into that room is not breakable. Uh, so it's, it's just going to be something that, uh, people can have digits and, and that kind of stuff. And it's basically the color of the room and just some lighting changes.
Anybody else? So I think we've got some questions here. Um, can this be taken care of on a, uh, altering the motion? Or should we send this back to staff to come back with some, uh, better answers to a question?
Um, I, I personally would like it to be more specific with what's going to be in the room. That's, that's, that's just me. I, I like that we know it's going to be. Seventy-five hundred dollar donation, but we don't even know how much all those supplies could be.
Uh, consensus among you.
I, I personally don't really need to know what's in the room, but maybe having like no more than seventy-five hundred or that.
We just come down, we're budget for this. This was a room that is planned solely with all my friends and they have a budget. And they're running with the costs and everything. So we really don't have anything.
So then can the motion read that we are accepting a donation of seventy-five hundred dollars?
I think that would be fair.
That's exactly what we're getting.
Yeah, seventy-five hundred dollars. Um, and it would technically be in kind. If you want to call it in kind donation, um, up to seventy-five hundred dollars worth of stuff that goes into the room. Uh, just because, you know, we're not putting out any money.
I'd like to throw this to our permanent area. What do you think, Mike?
Yeah, I, I think the, the motion can be the, the, to accept the, uh, donation from all my friends for sensory, uh, room creation. Uh, including in kind donations up to seventy-five hundred dollars. Chief, did you also say there may be an additional five thousand from Rotary Clubs of Grafton and Cedarburg that would go towards this room as well?
Yeah, that's correct. She did apply for a grant through the foundation, uh, through the Silver Grafton Rotary. Um, however, I'm not sure where that status is.
So I guess then my question is if that is approved, that grant of five thousand dollars is approved, are we limiting ourselves to the seventy-five hundred dollars? And not accepting the additional five hundred, five thousand that may be coming.
I, I would challenge that we might bring that back to a motion to add another five thousand dollars to that. There could only no new difference. I, I would challenge that, we might bring that back for motion to add another five thousand dollars to that, if only no new difference.
Well, I, I just, I just don't want to limit ourselves.
I, I think we might, uh, uh, for, for um working through our policy language i- in the most appropriate manner, I think we would wanna handle that as a separate distinct donation, I think that would be the cleanest way to handle that.
I agree.
Um, so I, I think for this evening's um efforts, the language as proposed by Attorney Herbrand with the up to seventy-five hundred dollars of in, uh, um items and in-kind effort donation, um, that is appropriate at this point.
Okay, so who, who, can I have a vote, who was the motion on this? Okay, so are you okay with the motion here? Just make a comment, so during this conversation, you've mentioned it's a, it's a donation, you've mentioned it's a grant for accounting purposes, we need to be clear on what it is.
It, it's a donation.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, uh, when the room is completed, would you uh give us a tour of that room?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, Amy, um, are you okay with the uh, the motion being amended, and who did the second, I, you did, you're okay with it, I am on the second, so we have motion, amended motion, uh, a uh amended motion, we'll take that to vote, Clark, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I do not, thank you.
Okay, thank you, um, so we have a motion and second, all in favor say aye. That motion carries. Okay, we'll go to motion number three, motion to approve the purchase and uh reserve ordering of two ambulance chassis refurbishments not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars per unit and the purchase of a Chevy Tahoe from Ewell Chevrolet not to exceed seventy thousand dollars, do you approve? Jesse?
Yes, very similar to um what we did earlier this year, um, with regards to the uh Police Department's Chevy Equinox um purchase. Um, we are looking to um pre-commit funds, albeit with a level of comfort because of the market conditions that are really driving these decisions to uh move forward with the purchase to reserve and order um two ambulance re-chassis and refurbishments not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars per unit and the purchase of a Chevy Tahoe, which um would be, I believe, is an administrative vehicle um for the Fire Department from Ewell Chevrolet, who is the state vendor um, not to exceed uh seventy thousand dollars, so this is coming before the Village Board this evening, and yes, um, staff does recognize we are pre-committing funds. And there is a level of comfort with that, um, because of market conditions and these are um needs of the Fire Department, so it is before the uh uh Village Board with a recommendation.
Okay, motion in a second to approve the purchase and reserve ordering of two ambulance, uh, uh, re-chassis, refurbishment, say three hundred thousand dollars per unit and the purchase of a Tahoe uh from Ewell Chevrolet not to exceed seventy thousand dollars, I need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion on this? Chief, uh, which uh Tahoe, uh, this vehicle on the Tahoe is I gonna replace?
Uh, we'll see when it gets here, what our needs are, but it could go to my position. It could go to the Assistant Chief or it could go to our EMS responsible.
Okay.
So we kinda wait to see what our needs are at that time, then we'll.
That sounds good, thank you. Any further questions, Clark? All good, okay, um, all right, we motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, uh, let's go to Department of Officers reports, uh, little administrative report.
Certainly, um, first one, you may have noticed uh when you came in, the sidewalk project between Curia and uh the village and across village property is coming to fruition, they are working on their segment now where that ends, our Public Works crew will pick up to install the ADA RAM, um, selfishly, we wanted to make sure that was done correctly. Um, and also just uh providing um, um, some proverbial skin in the game, if you will, in our agreement with Curia for that easement across village property to provide safe walkway and crossing on Badger Circle, as you may recall, their original plan was simply a crosswalk kitty corner right in the middle of the curve. Which uh not necessarily a good idea for pedestrian safety, so working with them, we came to this solution and it is coming to fruition. Um, so that should be done in the coming weeks here. Um, homecoming parade, uh, the school district's homecoming parade is this coming Thursday, Highway sixty will be closed for a short period that evening to accommodate the parade, um, the village will be posting detour information prior to the event, so keep an eye out for that. But we'll make sure to communicate out um as best we can with regards to the detour around the short parade route. Hydrant flushing is set to kickoff next week, um, we've already started advertising that, if you will, online. Um, this is a maintenance measure to make, uh, that should take about three weeks to complete, um, whereby all the hydrants are exercised and flushed to ensure they're in good working order. Um, very uh happy to report and congratulations are due to Assistant Chief Eric Sutherland from the Grafton Police Department as he is our first ever current employee to have achieved graduation from the FBI National Academy. Um, he did, he graduated this last weekend, he is back in the office, um, trying to get caught back up on some administrative things, but um congratulations are in order, Chief Capanera came to the organization, having graduated from the FBI Academy, this Assistant Chief Sutherland is our first in-house current employee to um achieve that designation, um, kudos to all to him. Last but not least. Last but not least, happy to report that Park and Recreation Programming is off to a strong start with the latest edition of their uh fall and winter handbook just being published, so everybody is quite busy during budget season, life is good, and that is what I have to report this evening.
Very good. Thank you, Jesse, and staff members, and again, congratulations, Eric, that's, that's no small achievement, thank you. All right, let's go to approval of operator's license here. Looks like uh the following persons have applied for operating licenses and village Grafton background check was conducted, uh, which included criminal history, driver's license check and wanted probation status. Uh, chief is recommending Robert Bruce Burger at Martini's Pete's and Michelle Lee Levison at Milwaukee Ale House. Uh, we have a motion, can we get a motion to approve the issuance of operator license as presented?
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
The motion and second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, and that motion carries, thank you very much. All right, uh, discussion here, uh, to talk a little bit about Distillery, the liquor license temporary expansion uh, uh, of the premises, Jesse, before I do anything here with a uh, a motion and a second uh, can you do a quick explanation of what exactly is happening here?
Absolutely, we have a bit of a unique situation whereby the stiller, stillery is looking to um obtain a temporary expansion of premise. Very similar to other um establishments here in the village who basically have an outdoor party, an organized outdoor party. Liquor licenses basically encompass indoor sales only. So the unique part of this temporary expansion of premise is the fact that the temporary expansion of premise actually goes out into Paramount Plaza, which is a public park. So, what we have determined as staff in order to meet the needs of them as a business, but yet make sure that we maintain our rights and uh um expectations of public park space in the long run is before the Village Board this evening, our two near-term temporary of ex- temporary expansion of premise requests by Distillery. At the same time, later this month at the Park and Rec Committee meeting, Director Hoyer will be bringing forward the discussion item as to is the Park and Recreation Committee ready, willing and able to commit to multiple numbers, multiple events like this throughout the year ongoing. Um, there's a level of comfort with the two right here and now, but we do not wanna overcommit public park space for these private business um, um, events. So there's, it's a unique nuance here, that said, these events have been vetted by uh Park and Rec and staff and the Police Department. There are no questions, comments or concerns for the events on the agenda here this evening for the Village Board to consider. But again, looking forward, um, Director Hoyer is going to be having um conversations with the Park Board about how to handle these moving forward because the stillery is looking to do more um with temporary expansion events, so that is kind of the, the gist of the situation right here and now.
Very good, before we go ahead with discussion here, um, I'm gonna take this, uh, these two motions as one, okay with that? Those are essentially four, uh, two different dates, they're similar, staying similar. Uh, we'll look for a motion to approve the expansion premise uh for the liquor license establishment, Distillery thirteen oh four twelve Avenue for the dates of October first and October fifteenth, from one PM till five PM. Um, for uh the uh benefiting Grafton Football on first and Grafton Music Program on the fifteenth. Need a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion here?
So.
Amy?
Thank you, Mr. President, so Chad and I did talk about this, cause I was confused on why it was on the agenda for Park and Rec. I understand we're only gonna discuss it, but it's asking for action requested for Park and Rec to charge them a hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. So we're voting on this tonight that we're allowing them to, do they know that there's a fee, and now we're doing a second one?
Yes, and, and, and basically, I think what we're doing tonight is giving them the extension of premises. And then at our meeting, um, Tim is also gonna, I think he's gonna be at our meeting, and uh he's um gonna discuss with you guys more his plans for these events, but also what his vision is going into next year during the summer months of adding some more of these types of events in, and I have found a policy um, that was created many years ago in which there were fees set up for people to pay to use the plaza for certain types of events. And this falls under that fee in which I would like to charge them to use the fee for these two events. And that, and that, in the meantime, I want to, before next year starts, I'd like to go through that policy and kind of back through it again to see if there's any changes or increases the fees or anything that the Park Board would like to use going forward.
And will it be one eighty-seven fifty for each date?
Yes. And then there's a significant part of that, I can't remember off the top of my head, that's like a cleanup deposit that gets returned every afternoon. We're making less than a hundred dollars on, on each, each use.
Any other questions here, uh, Risa?
Um, will there be alcohol served out in the Paramount area? That is really what the expansion process is for.
Okay, yeah, okay, perfect.
Good, a good question, I know we had a little discussion today at staff meeting about, you know, the enforcement sort of open yeah, open containers, uh, hasn't been an issue to this point. So, any other question, Clark, do you have a question on this, or are you all good?
Yes.
What kind, what kind of cars are those?
Lots of cumulus here in Colorado.
I, I was gonna say also cumulus, believe it or not. Very good, okay, we have a motion in a second and a little bit of humor in there, uh, we'll look for a vote here, uh, all in favor, say aye. That motion carries, uh, we'll go to report bills, uh, total village expenditures for one million, three hundred two thousand, three hundred or one million, three hundred to three hundred nine thousand and fifty-nine cents. I did see a little bit of, of. So, um, we'll look for a motion in a second to approve these expenditures.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
We have a motion in a second, any other uh discussion on this?
Uh, Jesse, I noticed it seemed more more often this particular month from husband and wife where there was miscellaneous, miscellaneous. Like what, what are we, what is, what is miscellaneous?
I would have to look, uh, I don't know, I'd have to look at the invoice and see what the dates are and try to track back through my phone log, I don't.
I can tell you, uh, Mr. President, that, uh, we have a standing phone call weekly.
We do.
Uh, with Jessica, Jesse and I, and uh, we have an agenda, and there's about eight, eight items plus or minus every week on that, and so I, I don't list all eight items that we discuss, I lump it into this miscellaneous issues, but that's the, that's the item that you're seeing, it's probably weekly that you're seeing. That we're, we're just, we're sort of poring through various items.
So that's a check-in that we have as far as maintaining um communication on all the open items that we have, um, here in the village.
Okay, and prioritizing.
Yes. Correct. So that, that would be the item in particular, without seeing invoice in front of me, yep, makes sense.
Anything else, Jim? Oh, okay, any other questions? Clark, you're good out there?
All good.
Sounds good, all right, we have a motion in second, all in favor say aye. That motion carries, uh, we'll go to number ten, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn, I'll second.
The motion in second, all in favor of adjournment, say aye. That motion carries.
All right, well, thank you much, all, have a good night.
Cheers, everyone.